Call us to order. Thank you all for coming, and we'll start with the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and the United Republic for religious fans, our nation on the ground, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We acknowledge that the Downers Grove Public Library sits on the unceded traditional and ancestral homelands of Native peoples. We honor with gratitude the land itself and the indigenous peoples who have been caretakers of the land throughout generations, past and present. We invite you to learn more about the genocide and forced displacement by non-native settlers and the ongoing justices against Native peoples. Can we call the roll, please?
Yes. Trustee, oh my goodness, all the names have changed. Trustee Gagani, right out of the gate. Trustee Gagani will be late for the meeting, so she will be here in a little bit. Trustee Humphreys.
Here.
Trustee Kuntia.
Here.
Trustee Sledak.
Here.
Trustee Williams.
Here.
President Topic.
Here. All right. Our first item is the consent agenda. Just for those who don't understand or unfamiliar, consent agenda, we just can pass all these things kind of at once, and if any individual board member wants to pull any items out for a separate discussion and vote, then they are free to do that. So can I have a motion on the consent agenda?
I will motion to pass the consent agenda.
Do we have a second?
Sure.
Good. And I think we can call the roll for that.
Sure. Trustee Humphreys.
Yes.
Trustee Kuntia.
Yes.
Trustee Sledak.
Yes.
Trustee Williams.
Yes.
President Topic.
Yes. Consent agenda passes. Next item is public comment. I think folks are pretty familiar with the public comment rules. I won't be through them in detail, but we ask, you limit your comments to three minutes, you can go up to five minutes, 30 minutes total. We can extend that depending on what circumstances are and what volume of comments we're getting. So we'd ask you just direct the comments to the board, and I'll leave it at that. So the floor is open. You don't have to talk into the microphone, just come near the microphone. So anyone who would like to comment, please go ahead.
Hi, Ed Pauling.
A little bit nearer. Just get close to it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I think all of you know me. I was at the village council meeting last night, and you probably all have heard, but just in case somebody hasn't, they voted to put a proposition to convert the library board positions to elected positions. And the people who were opposed to it spoke out and listed out a lot of disadvantages, and the people that were in favor of it, I didn't hear any advantage. I just heard them say that they wanted to do it, and it seemed like what we ought to do. So to me, that's a very weak argument, but it makes me nervous because on the disadvantages, there's a lot of cost increases. You know, I heard things like caps on budgets and things like that that become a force. So two things I would ask of the board is, please start doing research, because this will come up. And second, I think it would be beneficial to help get the word out, because I know that the majority of people in Downers Grove support the library. And I'm expecting the people favoring this proposition, I'm going to try to rally people to vote to do that. And I think if the word gets out to people supporting the library, we'll be able to stop it, and that would be good for the library. So, thank you.
Do we have any other comments?
Good evening. Ed Brainerd, longtime resident of Downers Grove. First and foremost, thank you. I have some thank yous for you guys. I'd like to thank trustees Topic and Williams for the response to my emails last month regarding children's safety and security within the library. I look forward to your continued updates on this matter. I hope that both of you will make this a top priority during your terms as library trustees. Last month's public comments. The summary of my comments in the current board packets from October's meeting was barely half of what I said, leaving the most important part out. This is not transparency. The first half reads as such, "Ed Brainerd, a resident of Downers Grove, expressed concern for safety in the library, which saw 16 incidents in four months that required police assistance. He asked the library for a full-time security team." And in fact, that's what I said. However, and more importantly, the why is what's missing. It should be added to the record, the why. I further stated that Ms. Milivek's Gold Star Library, the Arlington Heights Library, as she often refers to it, had only six police incidents from January through September, only six visits in nine months versus 16 in four months in the Downers Grove Library. Again, that's one per week. With these numbers, our library's not safe and secure. Again, the why? Because Arlington Heights has a separate, dedicated, trained security team in their library at all times that they're open. This is the why. And it's the why our library needs to add a trained security team to help guarantee the safety and security to Downers Grove moms, their babies, young children, and all Downers Grove patrons. So please be sure that these comments go on record for this month's meeting. Last, but not least, in August, I asked Ms. Milivek to make the library incident police reports more transparent and available rather than burying them in the trustee board packets. I doubt that there's one in 100 moms or patrons in Downers Grove that could find these incident reports on the library website. These reports should be either reported prominently on the website in real time and/or published in the discoveries newsletter, displayed prominently and easy to find. The director and trustees often use the word transparency, so let's be transparent with the incident police reports. Comments later, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have more comments?
Elaine Brainerd, I'm a resident here. I'm upset with the minutes from the prior meeting and how they've been condensed down.
A minute and a half.
Okay. It went from verbatim months back, which was a bit much, to now, it's like two lines, and you're missing the salient points of what I said at the last meeting. I was talking about the social worker here, comparing it to Arlington Heights. And all it said was that the other side hasn't shown the need for a social worker here. It didn't mention any of what I said, the comparisons to Arlington Heights'. So I'd like to have those minutes redone to show my salient points. And I think that we need to find something between verbatim and not winnowing down to where if you don't like what someone said, you can just cut it out. It's prejudicial editing, is what it is. And I think that we have to be very careful about editing people's comments to that degree. Let's have truth in the minutes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Could I ask a question?
Sure, coming up.
Is it not true that the meeting is recorded and that everything I'm saying right now is recorded? And so everything verbatim is available to the public? Is that not true?
I don't want to do too much back and forth.
I'm not trying to do back and forth. I'm asking for clarification.
Right.
That's all.
Understood.
Is it true that this is available to the public?
The meetings are recorded.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Other comments?
Janine, I want to correct an earlier statement. As I understand it, I was also at the village council meeting last night. The action item that was presented was a motion to put the question regarding the library on a reading status for the December 3 meeting. So it has not been passed yet, but it will be coming up again for discussion and vote, and that determination will be made at their December 3 meeting. I'm pretty sure that that's correct. If you have an interest in the topics, stay tuned at the village website for their information on their meetings and their agenda. So, thank you.
Anyone else? All right. Thank you all. Next is trustee comments. Anyone care to start?
I'll go.
Okay.
I want to address the issue that came up with the village last night, just some salient points that I've jotted down. I did watch the meeting. This has been thrown at us real quickly with no time for due diligence, with no time for us to meet as a board, hasn't been on our agenda. So whatever we say about it tonight, we're saying as individuals, because it hasn't been something that we've had an opportunity to really talk about. One of the things that was said was that if this does become an advisory referendum for the spring election, that it would be on the library to mount the public education campaign about it. Our budget is already set. This is like an unfunded mandate. We had to get the budget in several months ago for this year, so there would be a tremendous burden budgetarily and on the staff and on the trustees just to pull that together in this amount of time. That said, I mean, there's nothing inherently evil about an elected board. I don't think you're going to hear any of us say that. There obviously are pros and cons of both forms. But while this is all kind of hanging out there, I have concerns about the effect on our current progress. Is there anything we're going to have to stop while we put the brakes on and deal with that? And we've been making some good progress with reforms and strategic plan. The effect on the morale, recruiting, retention of the staff, and even if we have trustee openings, if this is really in flux, who's going to apply to be on a board if they think it is going to change, and they're going to be off or have to make a decision to run an expensive campaign? There was a lot of talk about accountability, and the statutory role of a district elected board is no different than the statutory role of the appointed board in the commission form of government. The job is the job, and it's spelled out in the Illinois Library Act, so it doesn't really change anything in terms of the role of the board. The council didn't talk very much about the process of all of this, which is a statutory process that's long and arduous and expensive to do, let alone the outcome. It's kind of ironic, because we're at a time when a lot of government officials of both parties are talking about government consolidation, because we have so darn many taxing bodies in this state. We would be forming a new taxing body. It seems to be kind of contrary to trend, let alone whether it would actually end up costing more money to run the library. Now, that's something we would have to do a cost benefit analysis on. The village does not have the authority to do any of this. That's why it's an advisory referendum. They're doing it for whatever purposes they're doing it, but the statutes preclude them moving forward with it regardless of the outcome of any advisory referendum. There was a lot of conversation last night about how you do neutral wording on a referendum. And the proposed referendum right now was purported to be neutral. It's not. I don't know how you go forward with a really neutral referendum, but the fact that it didn't mention that this would be a body with its own taxing authority leaves a vital piece of information that the public needs to know if they're going to vote on something like this. So I think there needs to be more work done on what the proposition actually would look Finally, I've been going, as I've said at previous meetings, to several library board meetings. I've been to about a half a dozen library board meetings all around Western Cook and DuPage, all of which are districts. At every one of them, I was the only visitor. Very few people vote in library board elections, even if it's tied to a municipal election. A lot of times, that ballot doesn't even get paid attention to. And those trustees do the same job we do, but they are much less connected to their municipalities than we are with this structure. And as frustrating as that can be for all concerned at times, given what I have observed, the current structure actually creates more access and accountability and interaction with the village and the community than I've seen in any of the district libraries. You talk to trustees at other libraries, and I tell them that we have regulars that show up at our meetings, and sometimes we'll have, you know, 20, 30, 40 people, and they're just astonished. I would hate to see that go away. I've said time and time again that I love the fact that there are people in this community that care enough to really show up and watch what we're doing. The distance between the community and the municipal governments and the library boards in these surrounding towns is much greater than it is here. And so, I mean, that's almost a sociological study, but it is something I have observed myself, and it's something that may be another factor that would be worth consideration. We don't know how all of this is going to play out or when. It's incumbent on us, of course, to take it seriously. I think there are a lot of steps we can take, again, regardless of whatever the council is doing or signaling, if it looks like that's a feasible thing for us to do. But it does need to be done with due diligence and with budgeting, and not dive into the deep end of the pool, because there are a lot of implications, both financial and in terms of community relations, if we were to go forward with this. And I want to assure community and staff that this process under Illinois law takes time. This is not something that would happen immediately, even if it looks like it is going to happen. So there will be ample opportunity for this to roll out and for people to have their input. But that's where we are on it right now, and we, as a board, obviously have a lot of things that we're going to have to do to explain and address and put out public information if there is something that's going to be coming up for a vote. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Who's next?
I will echo a lot of Marty's sentiments. I think I just don't know enough. It's all really sudden, and I will admit that there's just a lot of cogs in this field that I don't understand. So I have a lot of questions, and I think, as Marty mentioned, we as a board haven't even had a chance to discuss this at all or to understand it at all. And there's just a lot of things I don't know, and so I don't even know that I can speak on it as well as Marty did. So I'm going to instead say something really, really positive. As everyone knows, we are working towards ADA compliance, to be completely compliant with the new ADA rules. And in that, we have two new really exciting things. We have been able to obtain two hearing loops, and for people who don't know what those are, they automatically connect via Bluetooth to a hearing aid, so those are in the main conference room. So if someone comes with a hearing aid, they can connect, and that opens up the opportunity to hear speakers, to participate in our programming in a way that maybe people didn't before. And we also have the instant language assistant. I don't even exactly know how it all works, I'm sure Julie will tell us, but I'm just really excited that these are things that the library is doing to include more patrons and make people feel more welcome. So, yeah, I'm excited about those two things. We've been talking about them for a while, and they finally come to fruition, and we have them, so it's exciting.
Just a couple of quick comments. I've been out of town, and I wasn't able to attend the meeting last night, and so I'm not quite up to speed on what went on. I just got off a plane from Dallas, about an hour ago, from Dallas. I echo what I've just heard. We have not, you know, I'm not quite sure where all this came from, but it didn't come from us, and so we cannot speak as a body to it yet. As individuals, we can express, but, you know, we've got to dive into the Illinois library law a little deeper than some of us have recently. Off the top of my head, there are a few things that we'll be looking at. One is the impact on taxpayers, because costs will go up with this plan in a number of ways, and I can't quantify them yet, but we'll have to do that. The village of Downers Grove, because it's a franchising municipality that issues a franchise to Commonwealth Edison Company on power, the village of Downers Grove and all of its buildings and related buildings receive power from Commonwealth Edison without paying additional cost for it, in other words, they don't get an electric bill. The library is included in that franchise agreement, so we would have to start paying them for the electricity, the air conditioning in our building, so that would be an additional cost. We share some staffing with the municipality of Downers Grove, some human resource staffing. We share some benefit packages that are negotiated by the village of Downers Grove. We're able to include our employees in some benefit packages, and since the number of employees is larger, the benefit price goes down usually, and so if we, in order to start providing comparable benefit packages to employees for a library district, we would have to negotiate those individually, and the price would go up. We share some bookkeeping processes with the village of Downers Grove. We decide how the money is spent, but they cut the checks. And we would probably have to hire a bookkeeper, at least one. The benefit packages I was relating to, we might have to hire, we probably would have to hire a human resources person or two, because we have a large number of employees. So I don't mean to quantify these, and that's just the starting point, I think, but it's not a simple matter. It's going to take many of us, including the village, to crawl through this and figure out exactly what the costs are going to be to the taxpayers. And I believe, and I haven't read all of this part of the Illinois library law, but I believe the creation of a library district requires a vote of people in the district, does it not? Not an advisory referendum, but a referendum to create a library district. And so there'd be a process, I assume, where you would have to, first of all, disband the municipal library that we already have, and then have an election to create a library district. I could be wrong, but...
You've got the basics.
But that's a start for me as an individual. I'm not speaking for the rest of the board. So we're going to be doing some homework. It will cost us some money to do some of this work and some checking out of the laws. We'll have to check with some lawyers and so on, so, but we'll do that, because that's our job.
Megan?
Thanks, Dave and Marty, for your comments and wisdom. I was taking my cues from others as to whether to address the village council's potential advisory referendum. I'll start with first principles. I do believe in direct accountability. I think it's an important consideration, but I think it's something that needs to be weighed against the other considerations. I was a little concerned about some of the things that were said by the village council members. One, I do think that it's the role of the village council to inform the public regarding the implications of their referendum if they choose to bring it. And the second thing is, I do think a cost benefit analysis should be done as soon as possible to inform the public. That's all I have to say on that matter, but I have some other comments. I'll also say good evening to everyone. I'd like to highlight a couple library programs. Earlier this week, I participated in a library's meditation session led by an outside volunteer helped me find an inner calmness in the midst of everything.
Good timing.
Yeah. Secondly, the library is accepting applications this month to participate in Girls Who Code, a free club open to children in two grade ranges, one for third and fourth graders and another for fifth through 12th graders, holding library cards. To all kids watching on YouTube, have your parents sign you up. Anecdotally, I can say that I've heard there are special challenges for females as it relates to STEM learning throughout their life. My mom is a retired fourth and fifth grade math teacher, and my brother-in-law is an engineering professor. Both have spoken about those challenges. If anyone questions the importance of learning code from an early age, this BBC headline from Monday will dispel that misconception. The BBC reported, "A seven-year-old coder has been offered a management position at an IT company as soon as he's old enough to legally work." I'm grateful to our library for partnering with Girls Who Code, which is a superb national organization. And finally, I wish everyone a happy, joyous Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Thank you. I just have a few comments. I do want to address the potential referendum, a few other things. First, glad to be here. Thanks to everyone for their confidence in me. Thanks to Swapna for her service as president of the board for quite a long time. A couple changes to the meetings. First, we're going to read the land acknowledgement only at our November meetings going forward in connection with Native American Heritage Month. I want to make clear that we are not backing off our commitment to the issue or to our equity strategic plan, and the acknowledgement will remain the same on the website and the library. We will be limiting the land acknowledgement meeting to November for Native American Heritage Month, which we are in right now. And I would encourage everyone to take advantage of the great resources the library has on Native American Heritage Month, to take the opportunity to really better understand the history. Second, as you saw earlier, I'm going to be moving more things to a consent agenda. Just to elaborate a little bit more on what I said, it is a commonly used technique or method of having meetings, both in public boards and private boards, in which everyone gets all the materials in advance. Rather than go item by item, we adopt them all at once. And again, if any individual board member wants to pull one item out, to... individual board member wants to pull one item out, to discuss it and vote specifically on it, then we can, we can do that. But I, I thought it'd be worth just explaining that a little bit to everyone. In February, we'll be starting coffee with trustees. So we, those of us who are able to attend, we'll be out on a Saturday morning. You can come by, talk with us a little less formally than, than we have here. And I, I look forward to having conversations with all of you about that. December, next month, will be a board retreat meeting. That is open to the public like any other meeting, but we will not be voting on any items. We'll be covering a few different topics. It's sort of a board retreat. With that, I do want to address the, the proposal that there be a referendum in April to convert the library. It's not even true to say convert, to, to end this library board and create a new legal entity. I'm not gonna get too deep in the merits of it because I don't think anyone knows the merits of it. No one, no one at the council, no one here. We don't really know what the full ramifications of this are. We do know, as people have mentioned already, there will be financial ramifications, there will be legal ramifications to how everything operates. I will ask Julie, when she does the library director's report, to do what she can to, to try to quantify what those costs might be. But the idea that, that on two weeks' notice, one of which is Thanksgiving week, that, that that's the amount of time that will be devoted to trying to get to the bottom of all this and figure out all these issues, decide whether to put it on, on, on a ballot, decide the language of the referendum, which is itself complicated. I don't think the language is accurate. I don't think it is comprehensive. It doesn't address the taxing cost ramifications. To do that all in two weeks, I think is pretty unreasonable to expect from residents in this village and to expect from this board. So I, if this is an important issue, fine. I don't see any reason why this needs to be done now. And if it needed to be done for April, then somebody should have raised the issue like last April or May, and we could have started looking into it. Apparently, it's going to be our responsibility to incur the cost of educating the public on whether this is or is not a good change. We haven't budgeted for that. We haven't planned for that. But the, the folks who voted in favor of this, voted in favor of voting on the resolution in two weeks, had said that it would be our responsibility to do that. So I, I don't think this is a responsible way to make a massive change to a very important part of this community. I, there is no reason that this needs to be going anywhere near this quickly. And to give everyone a frame of reference, as I understand it, the, the discussions about the referendum that people probably saw recently about video gambling in Downers Grove, that took literally years to go through that process and come up with, with the right language for it. To try to do all that in two weeks on something as important as this, and something that is potentially as divisive as this could be, I think this is really not an appropriate way for, for these kinds of decisions to be made. So whatever people think about it, I, I would encourage you on December 3rd to go to the village council meeting and, and tell them what you think, either way. I mean, I think they need to hear from people. If you can't go, if you go on the village's website, you can get, you can easily email village council members. So please do let them know what you think about this. Because, I mean, I agree that there needs to be accountability in all forms of government. My law practice is devoted to that. And I, and there is, I mean, there is something appealing about sort of being able to elect a library board. But there are also, there's other sides to that. I mean, then now people have to raise money to run for office. There, you know, there's problems that, or complications that can come with that. At the end of the day, we are accountable to the village council. We've seen that because I think two different members of this board have been removed by the village council. So the village council thinks that, you know, the way we are managing this library is not in the best interest of the community. They have a mechanism to do that. So we are accountable. And I think I'm gonna leave it at that. All right. Sorry, I lost my page here. What's our next, what's our next, the record's report?
I'm next. I want to thank everyone for putting up with us in our changed venue. We're here in the kids' program room. When we switched our date, the library's meeting room was not available. There is actually a holiday concert going on in the library's meeting room. We did not want to bump the holiday concert recital that was going on. So thank you for putting up with us here, particularly to Dan Port, our architect, who will be making a presentation without the usual, you know, big visuals that, that he has. Just for where we are at this point in the year, we're on track financially for year end. Our incidents were down in October to just 12. Some folks may have heard that there were significant number of police in the library at one point this afternoon. There was an incident off-site elsewhere in the downtown. Police thought that the individual had then entered the library reviewing our cameras. We found that that was not the case. And so they left. So that happened today. Some other things happening in our programs. If you haven't been upstairs to the teen area, go and look. The changes are ongoing and it looks fantastic. But our teen programs continue to outstrip our, our best expectations to where we would be at this year, at this point this year. And that was a huge strategic plan goal of ours, was improving our service to teens. So yay. Also, we have had such response to our recent toddler storytimes that the children's services staff have actually added, they now do a double toddler Tuesdays. So there are back-to-back toddler storytimes on Tuesdays, and they get upwards of 70 people at each of those back-to-back programs. So, and Allison can attest that all of our kid programs are very, very well-attended. Babies, toddlers, preschoolers, they're, they are all here in force. You may also notice that when you make it into our meeting room for your next wonderful meeting, hopefully as good as the meditation one, that we have new meeting room chairs. Those are fantastic. And thank you to Ian Noor, our building operations director, who identified that particular style of chair. That turned out to be approximately one-third of the cost that we thought that we were going to have to spend for meeting room chairs. They're unfortunately ridiculously expensive. And then on the issue of the village council and their, the proposed advisory referendum, the village council talks a lot about their priority action items. And their priority action items are the goals of their strategic plan. As you know, we went through a whole strategic planning process in 2023. The village was a part of that. Quite, most of the village council members and the mayor participated in that, in that process. They attended, they entered the survey, they attended our focus groups, they attended our strategic retreat to help us put together those goals. Well, this advisory referendum is tantamount to the village handing us a priority action item that we have to do in 2025 if they move forward with this. Again, that informational campaign was not in our 2025 budget. As you all know, our, our budget has to be submitted to the village board by August 31st of each year. It is well past August 31st. And then just some of the, the costs that would be, that I can just, off the top of my head, would increase. The electricity is first and foremost. We estimate that at over $100,000 a year because it's every, it's heating and cooling this library and keeping the lights on and all those computers and all the other wonderful things that we're doing here in the building. We also use the village's system for finance, HR, and payroll. So we would have to get our own separate software systems for that. In addition to the staff, the village handles all of our banking and investments. So reconciling those bank statements and making decisions on how to invest the library's money are things we've never had to do. That, the village does that. And it is, especially on the, on the investment side, that is not additive to what they're doing. It's just a few more dollars that they're putting into an investment. They are still having to go through that process to select investments. We participate in the village's benefits group, which does give us good economies of scale. Theoretically, we could still participate in that group. The park, the park district does as well. But we would need the staff to do the HR and finance things that the village currently does for us. And we estimate that would be two full-time professional positions. That you're probably looking at upwards of $150,000 for those two positions alone. So as we start talking about the costs of this, you know, we didn't even think about how much, I have no idea how much that software might cost us. So as we're looking at this, just a quick number, Matt and I were, were discussing this earlier, it would more than double what our levy increase was this year. That's quick and dirty estimate off the tops of our heads. So it would have a significant impact on the taxpayers here in Downers Grove. And there, there are many, many more things to be said about why certain areas choose to have a library district instead of a local library that is their municipal, that is village or city. But a lot of that is that a lot of our downstate areas are more rural. And so going into these districts really gives them the economy of scale. Well, for us, our economy of scale is being part of the village.
Can I ask you just a couple of follow-up questions?
Sure.
Has village staff reached out to try to get any data or information you to try to, from us to try to quantify what these costs would be?
No, the village staff has not contacted me with any questions.
And would it even be feasible for us to come close to a comprehensive analysis of these issues by December 3rd?
No, it would not be feasible for us to do that by December 3rd. To really do our due diligence on this, we would need months.
And it, Dave, if you have thought, or anybody else?
No, but I, I had a question. And I, you may have just covered this, but I, one of the things that was brought up by a commissary yesterday was pensions and staff and how, what does that look like? Cause I, for me, I'm thinking about the staff and how is this gonna affect our staff? And I worried about that a little bit.
So, and remember, this process, if it moved forward, would take years to get through. Staff, if the, if a library district were formed, that library district could choose to participate in IMRF, and then the staff would simply stop, you know, and whatever the date was that this library, that the village library stopped being a village library, would end their service with the village library. And then the next day, that's the way it's usually done, would start with the new library district that would also be part of IMRF. It would not actually affect their pension calculations because your pension is calculated based on your first day of service with any IMRF employer. So if you moved around libraries, it also does not change what tier you are in IMRF. So, but as part of the village's IMRF, I'm not sure how that would affect our IMRF rate, which is, which has a historical element to its calculation. And that's all statutory and way above my pay grade.
Just, just to follow, and I wanted to make a couple of comments there on that one. First of all, the IMRF is the Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund. And it is, it is just that. It handles many kinds of municipalities and, and other forms of government like park districts and.
Yes.
Schools.
Yes.
And so it's quite large.
Well, not the teachers.
And, and we participated in it through the village, but we, we could participate individually, but we're, we'd have, we'll have to research and find out what that, what the costs are of that. And we could still include a labor charge for us. And when I say a labor charge for us, I'm not suggesting that the village doesn't expend any effort on our part on any of these things, but they have a much huger economy of scale for that. The additional load that we put on the village for these things is trivial. If we have to do it ourselves, we have to get computers, we have to get software, we have to get people and staff and train them and so forth. And it's, it's, it's much a bigger deal. The other point I wanted to make is, question was, valid question was made, did the village staff ask the library for information about impacts of this or any of this? I just point out that the village staff on, on topics like this doesn't act on their own. If the village council wanted that information, they would have asked their staff to contact us. Probably they didn't yet. So I'm not blaming the staff or anybody.
I do, yes. Thank you for clarifying that because I did not.
I'm not trying to point a finger at staff or anybody else at this point yet.
We own this building.
Yeah, we own the building.
We don't own the parking lot. We also do not own officially, we actually lease portions of the property upon which this building sits. We lease that property from the village on a long-term lease. And as a matter of fact, some of this is what, Dan, our architect, will be speaking to. Because the, the study that we just had him do along with a survey company was to look at exactly how far the proposed ADA ramp impinges beyond what is currently leased from the village into the parking lot. It's a very tiny little piece, but it's still a piece and we would still have to work with the village on that. So there's, the village and the library are very deeply intertwined.
And there'd be a whole host of intergovernmental agreements that would have to be worked out. And that would extend the period of time to accomplish this quite a lot. And, and as far as the parking lot is concerned, that's not our parking lot now. We just, it happens to be there. It's a village-owned lot for the downtown and our patrons happen to use it. Because we are part of the downtown, it is not our responsibility to have a parking lot. It is the responsibility of the village to provide parking for all of the businesses and, and organizations within the downtown. That's the official name of it. The central business district, I believe. So, another clarification, but.
Any other questions for Julie?
We have a lot of homework to do.
Final one I was just gonna ask. If it did get on the ballot for April and we were the ones, I think even if the village is going to do an informational campaign, I think that we would need to do that as well.
Yes.
Obviously. How feasible is it to do that between now and April, given all the other things we've already been planning on doing, budgeting for?
Well, we would, it would impact our ability to reach some of our strategic plan goals. The, the time of, you know, the bandwidth of staff to take that on would be significantly impacted. So we would have to talk about what we wouldn't be able to do on the strategic plan goals. And it would also have a, probably have a significant impact on our marketing and communications budget. You would likely see some cuts to the discoveries newsletter to allow us to do informational campaign. Because the, the discoveries newsletter is the biggest part of our marketing and communications budget.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, the, as was pointed out, what the village did apparently last night, I didn't watch the meeting, but apparently what the village did last night is to vote, to decide something on December 3rd. What they will decide on December 3rd is to whether, whether or not to put an advisory referendum on the ballot in April, which is the ballot where we vote for school board members and village council members and things like that. And that would be an advisory meeting. It's not totally clear to me yet, I'll have to do some work, and we'll all have to do some work, what follows that. But I believe, somebody correct me if I'm wrong, if we are, if a library district is to be created in the state of Illinois, the residents of that new library district will have to vote to create that library district. And that'll be another referendum somewhere down the low, down the road, which would absolutely, which would actually do the creation of the district and authorize new tax levies and, and.
There's no obligation that we do anything should. There's no obligation that we do anything should that pass in April if it's on there. I mean, I think it's incumbent on us to take this seriously and to look at that option. But it's not something we would have to react to in the.
I don't believe the village council can do those things, any more than we can do those things. But it'll require a major education effort on the residents of Downers Grove to make a reasonable choice whenever that date comes. And that's not the April date. Well, it would be the April date because if the April advisory referendum passes, many of our constituents think, well, say, well, that's the done deal. Well, it's not a done deal. And so there will have to be another referendum after that to do the.
And it would have to become either from the community or from this board.
But, well, we've all got some homework to do.
December 3rd is the village council meeting, I'll just reiterate that one more time, please. Don't hesitate to contact them with your, with your visa, I know we will be.
And if any of, sorry.
No, go ahead.
We say if any of you are en soniak, read the Illinois Library Act.
Okay, let's move on. Next item is a resolution recognizing 2024 milestone anniversary, so I'm very, very happy to be reading that resolution. So I'll read it and then I'll ask if someone wants to move for us to adopt it, and then we will vote on it. Resolution number 2024-3, a resolution of appreciation for the service of staff members who've celebrated milestone service anniversaries in 2024. Whereas 13 members of the Downers Grove Public Library staff have celebrated milestone service anniversaries in 2024 totaling 115 years of service as follows. Five years of service, Grace Goodwin, Martha Harnick, Brian Ruin, Gracie Rule, Lane Folkey, I really should have practiced that in advance, I'm so sorry. Lane Folkey, Tricia Thompson, 10 years of service, Don Goliath, Fred LaBarren, Max Magovero, Mary Pillar, Kira Riddle, 15 years of service, Maggie Moore, 20 years of service, Caitlin Vettelas. Caitlin, did I get it right?
Yep, Vettelas.
Vettelas.
Like a disease.
And whereas the committed services of these staff members have contributed significantly to the library's high level of performance and high reputation in the community, and whereas 2024 has provided many new opportunities for service, including providing library cards to all students in District 58 and hosting the library's first human library event, therefore be it resolved that the Board of Library Trustees recognizes with great appreciation the dedication and perseverance of those staff members and thanks them for their outstanding work. May I have a motion, please?
I move the acceptance of that resolution.
I will say it.
Oh, it doubles.
I'm so excited.
All right, should we roll call? Or can we, can we just? Why don't we do?
Go ahead.
I'm new to this, folks, so.
Technically, as a resolution, you should.
Roll call.
We should roll call? All right, then let us roll call.
Trustee Humphries.
Yes.
Trustee Quintio.
Yes.
Trustee Slatak.
Yes.
Trustee Williams.
Yes.
President Topp.
Yes. Resolution passes and thank you. All right, next is unfinished business product architecture presentation of the planning section. You have the floor.
No, thank you.
Just if you would introduce yourself.
Yeah, I will, for sure. My name is Dan Port, I'm one of the partners at Product Architecture Design. We've been working with you guys for quite some time. And from today's meeting is kind of a follow-up from a meeting we had actually in March, March 20th, so about six months ago. And I put together a quick package, I have a couple more documents with me. As Julie was saying, we, we started by looking at who was the sort of, how much land we could expand out the front of the library to the north side, I have to tell you the front or the back, I'm not really sure what you, how you guys prefer. But to understand, well, the biggest idea is to try to fix the accessibility of that entrance. So currently, as you come to the library, you have to sort of come off the parking lot, the end of the ramp that's located all the way to the west, and then come down at the bottom and then end up at the lower level. So as part of the master plan idea of the second floor, we also looked at that entrance to see if we could increase accessibility and at the same time kind of move things around in the building to make them more intuitive and/or support staff programming.
Can I pause you one second?
Please.
Julie, can you just give a little context for the, I believe this came from prior strategic plan? Can you just flush that out real quick?
Yeah, so this is part of, the whole thing started as a 2023 strategic plan initiative. So this came out of our strategic plan. One of the goals in that strategic plan was to remove barriers to service, including improving accessibility from the parking lot side in particular. There are also some other strategic plan items that were in there, including the improved services to teens by creating an acoustically separated teen services area. There were also improvements to our programming, including technology and STEM-based programming that we were looking at to do a maker space. So this, so this whole building project was, was built on that foundation of those different, disparate items within our strategic plan. So that's why we're moving forward with it. And Dan did the, the presentation in March. When we looked at it, we realized that the footprint of the building would be such that it would go beyond the current curb line, which is what we lease from the village currently. And so we asked to do a survey of the properties to really get very granular in how much of that is in the current lease versus how much we would need to work with the village if we were to move forward with the ADA accessibility ramp that would impinge on that area.
Perfect. And at the same time, I think, so we did a survey which was more topographical and/or looking at what utilities or obstacles there would be within that area. There was no updated survey when the building was built, so we had the design drawings, we weren't really sure exactly what was sitting there today. So we got three proposals from civil engineers to do, or, I'm sorry, surveyors, to do a survey in the back of the building. And also Julie asked us to do a parcel, sort of, it's like when you buy your house and it gives you a legal description of the lots in the library, the lots that the parking lot and the library sit on is made up of about, I'm gonna say, eight or nine different lots that have not been combined to a single lot. So I did notice on this drawing that actually the green part should come further down than I dashed on your drawings. So the library outline is in red, if you guys can all see. And then the green, dark green is actually owned by the village, and then the Lot 1 is actually an old Sinclair lot, and I'm not entirely sure who owns that, I'm assuming it's the village. But the actual parcels owned by the village come all the way down through Lot 56. About a quarter of the building, maybe, a little less than that, 20% of the building on the first level sits on village-owned land, which Julie was describing as leased. So what we did next, there's a couple things that I'll say in advance of what we did in terms of the design, but if you turn to the pages that are following, there's one that sort of looks at the survey itself. This is kind of funny with how the screen has been a lot. And this kind of shows what things are located on the ground, and I can describe that to you very quickly. There is a utility easement, which is this yellow bar that actually comes from more or less the entrance on the west side of the library, more or less to the front doors. If there's, you remember on the front door, the doors, entrance on that side, there's a large masonry pylon that holds up the end of the canopy, and the doors are about 15 feet away. Both the easement and the main electrical line for those run directly between those two things. Changing those is not impossible. We would have to work with the village to change the easement. We're actually confident that the easement was created to run the electrical line in it, but they decided to run it south of that. And then moving the electrical line, although it is not done every day, it is also not something that is impossible to do. It just would increase the amount of work and a little bit of cost. So the original drawing which we're showing you as scheme A was the ramp that was here. And one of the things that we did actually by making this ramp is they created kind of an open space within the building, which was nice because it took care of some of the spill space that comes out of the meeting rooms. Like tonight, they have a large recital going on, which is actually really pretty to listen to as I came in. But the people that, when you come out of there, you're kind of cramped a little bit and you're sort of in the way of people walking into the library. So what we wanted to do was open this up at the ramp and then use that space as the café that is used outside of the admin suite today, and then replace that in the schemes that we did as part of the master plan with either additional offices for the admin, a teen space, because the teen staff is actually the youth staff, which is on Level 1, or not, not youth staff, but it's, they were talking about bringing it down to Level 1 as part of the master plan, and then, and/or maker space. So it was just using that area because we didn't want to do an addition to the building beyond the ramp to create additional spaces for the staff. So the first ramp scheme that we did actually extended out the doors as far as we could, and that goes entirely over the easement, which we are not allowed to build on without moving it, and over the electrical line. So although we can do those things, we would actually need to work with the village. And again, so we then created schemes two and three, which reduce the footprint to actually miss both the easement and the electrical line. So we do still think that the ramp project is feasible. We, we actually think that the entrance back there is pretty rough in terms of accessibility and having the same experience as you come in, and especially in inclement weather. Again, you have to leave the parking lot, come to the west, and then walk down a large, a long ramp that goes outside in snow, so you're really not able to be dropped off at an accessible entrance on this, the north side of the building.
That vestibule would be a, would be a ramped vestibule?
It's actually, the vestibule itself would be flat, and then you'd go through a set of double doors, which would actually help with wet weather coming in. Those are the single set of doors now.
Okay.
And then once you walked in, you would either take the ramp down around the café, or you would get rid of half the stair and you'd walk down one side of that stair. So that's sort of what we're talking about as a ramp this way. Sorry, I keep putting it in the back, you guys, I apologize. And then the café space would be here, this is the stair coming down, and then it actually creates additional gallery walls. I think the gallery program that you guys have in this library is unparalleled, so it actually gives you additional surface area to show more community work. Should you want us to move forward? It sounds like you guys have a lot on your plate right now. But the next thing we would do is, the last couple of projects, we've worked with Shels McNet construction, who have done a project of the construction management on these projects that we've done together. Shels McNet does all of our estimating in our office for all of our projects. So next steps would be to have this estimated along with the upstairs master plan, plans that we showed you in March. I think you guys could then make informed decisions. We always base projects. The main goal of this project is to understand projects for the next five, 10 years. So we do our estimates in a way that we call them à la carte, more or less like a restaurant, where you can pick and choose which ones you want to do in which phases annually as funds become available. So it really just gives you the ability to have, make super informed decisions, both in terms of how to support the library programs, what's most important, and then second, how much it would cost and how to save for those projects.
Can I ask a question?
Please.
And I know we asked you to do this, but I, if we, if we move forward, can we see some of those handicap parking spots, like where those are gonna go in some of these plans? Are they all still staying?
They're actually still staying there, so I just graded out what was.
Okay.
So yeah, they're just graded out to the right, they're, they're.
They're still there, okay, those are still, and we still add it.
And the nicest part is now you don't leave the last spot, you go all the way here.
Okay.
And then, so, Matt, I'm not sure if you know this tongue, but right now if you're in this handicap spot, you come all the way behind the cars.
Right.
Down this, which is not accessible, and then down a ramp down the building. So you're literally leaving a space even 10 feet away, you have to go about 250 feet to get where you'd like to go.
I wanted to make sure.
Yeah, it doesn't touch any of the parking spaces. That was one of the first things we needed to say, and that we needed this survey to tell us for sure. It does not touch any of the parking spaces. What it does do is, if you, when you go back out through the forestry exit, take a look on your left as you're leaving, there is the curb cut and it kind of, and it comes in, and there's a section that is yellow striped, past, that is not part of the handicapped, it's kind of a standing area, I think you would say, it's kind of a drop-off space. Anyway, it would straighten out that curve, that little in-depth that comes in.
And quite frankly, when we moved the schemes back a little bit to make better entry for the vestibule, if need be, we could move that. It's a better drop-off when it's flatter.
Yeah.
Here, I'll draw it. Currently, it goes like this, like that, sort of an S.
Yeah.
Like that. So it actually still fits. If the village wanted us to leave that alone, we could. But by flattening it out, we create again more sort of linear area for cars to pull up, drop people off, and then pull away.
But one of the best parts is that it puts a concrete sidewalk in front of
That's right.
the handicap parking spaces that would be straight to the building.
It solves a lot of problems that are back there. It's a pretty, it's a pretty, it's kind of a mess.
So you've given us sort of three different ways of doing that area.
I have, and I think our, our recommendation would be two and three are more or less the same. We were just kind of showing different ways to kind of.
One is more, the other is curved.
Yeah, so it's different ways of skinning cap, we get excited.
And those would include some outdoor patio space, we wouldn't get with the first one, but with the first one, we would have some indoor extra.
And you actually get indoor for both, it's just a little bit less than the other schemes, but it's actually not much more. We ended up with a back scenario.
Okay, and.
And we avoid the electric, we avoid the
Right.
easement, which are headaches.
And those are less square feet, so I'm not gonna ask you to commit to numbers, obviously.
I'm not.
And those gonna be likely to be less.
They would be less money, correct.
Okay.
And the first one with moving the easement, you would probably, I mean, it could be $102,000 to move those two things.
Okay.
It's quite a bit. So I, we would not recommend taking, having that hurdle, because we feel like the other schemes work well enough, that you achieve your goals without having to spend dollars on things that people don't see or use.
Clarify that part a little bit for me.
Sure.
The easement, we're not even sure there's something under the easement, are we?
There's not, but easements are easements, and it's, you just, they create them to run utilities typically, and it just feels like they missed it, or the transformer was in prior to them establishing the easement. So we could work with the village to see if there's anything, something we don't know that's in there. They did their due diligence and had Julie come out and strike it all. But it, it's sort of one of those things, I know that sounded great answer, but just easements don't get built in, it's kind of the rules.
And it's unfortunate that this other issue has come up with the village now, because normally.
Well, so Julie said it seemed like the easement would work, it'd be easy, she's like.
Normally, we just go over there and say, is that real easement? Can we?
Yeah, right.
Can we change it?
Right, and then, and again, we went to the village first to see if they had this drawing of the parcels, because it would be easy just to ask for the information. They didn't, so actually this, Julie has the full electronic and AutoCAD survey, which AutoCAD's not always useful, but it's useful for different reasons. But again, it shows you exactly what the legal description is of the lots. It took a couple months to get, they actually had to go through and historically look back at the parcels.
That was the long part.
Yeah, we were done with the survey within a month. It took, it took two, three months to get the legal descriptions.
I went through the same thing with my church across the street.
Yeah.
We were repaving, well, it was much more than repaving, moving some parking lots.
That's right.
And this is really.
There's an underground creek through there and some other things, and they didn't know where they were.
Those are tough.
There's a creek under the church?
Right behind the church. Anyway, it's, we've traditionally had a pretty friendly relationship with those, and we can work things out. I hope we can maintain that through this other process, but.
One of the things that this process brought to light, the village had not realized that when the lease was done and the parking lot was created, that they had not consolidated the pins on those parcels that they own that make up the parking lot over there. And so in talking to the village manager, and he was saying, oh, yeah, at some point we should really clean this up, which is part of the reason we went through the whole, let's get the legal descriptions, so that when it, when we're ready to do something with the lease and all of that, and the village will have all of the legal descriptions to, to do their cleanup of the pins, and we can kind of, the idea was, let's do it all at once, one time.
Typically, you see the pins just consolidated when the building's built. Typically, you see the pins just consolidated when the building's built.
Just a side comment. If we do all of that, we might have to do it again if we convert it to a library.
And then Julie, I'll send you the... I dashed it where the building is, but I'll send you the corrected.
So, the next step would be for us to sort of settle on one of these?
Yeah, and B and C are the same.
Got it.
Again, so it did...
All right, so A or B slash D?
Yeah, 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 I like this better, but I would just... And again, our recommendation would be to go with B and C. And again, it's just cost.
Okay.
So, we're really... Again, the goal of a master plan always is to make sure there's enough dollars to do any rights on the deed. After we... Once projects start, there's a ton of design work left to do.
Right.
And so, it really is, again, just establishing a schedule of values and then goals.
Okay. And so, then, the next step would be, if we want to go forward, to have you go forward with estimating the...
Yeah, and as part of our fee already. It really is just checking the boxes. Says you guys, you're cool with what we have, we've shown you.
Right.
And the plans, I think, are already worked out. We're not really concerned about that. It really was if you're interested in scenes.
Well, as far as the village is concerned, we're really talking staff-level kinds of negotiations, aren't we?
Well, if it comes to the actually having to get a little piece of property from them...
If there actually is a property transfer.
But B and C doesn't require that.
It does. So, the green is... The green is village-owned. Sorry. So, on your drawing, do you have the green?
So, it does impinge just a little bit.
So, everything, and then what I dashed in, is green is village-owned. So, they... And your building is the... Your current building without that ramp on it is the red outline. So, the village already owns about 20%, 15% of what you sit on. And by all of our luck, it's exactly where we want the ramp.
Okay, so regardless of...
Regardless, any expansion we do on that end of the building.
It's just we wouldn't have...
Right now, the parcel... Your building's about a foot and a half over their parcel length, for what reason, I don't know. But it kisses right up against the building.
Okay.
Sorry if that wasn't clear.
So, the big question is, moving ahead with cost estimating, when do we... When and how to take this to the village? We're seeking direction from you.
Do people have thoughts on whether we should just go ahead and get the estimates or whether we should talk first with the village?
I don't see any reason why we can't proceed the way we would normally do. We've still got a job to do here. The library's still got its job to do. The rest of this stuff, we can't let it distract us from doing that job.
I understand, but rest of the stuff is gonna take as minimum, two or three years.
So, if it happens at all.
Probably later, probably not.
So, yeah.
Yeah, I agree. I don't think we should complicate it with the, you know, the other things going on.
Yeah, I think we should just move ahead.